Welcome to the Dougherty County Board of Commissioners meeting with your chairman, Christopher S. Cohelis. Your commissioners include, from District One, Commissioner Ed Newsom; from District Two, Commissioner Victor Edwards; from District Three, Commissioner Clinton Johnson; from District Four, Commissioner Russell Gray; from District Five, Commissioner Gloria Gaines; and from District Six, Commissioner Anthony Jones. Also joining us is your county administrator, Michael McCoy; Assistant County Administrator, Scott Addison; County Clerk, Jawan Ware; and County Attorney, Spencer Lee. Thank you for joining your Dougherty County Commission meeting.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And call it an order, the Dougherty County Commission Regular Meeting for November 1st, 2021. Note for the record that all commissioners are present and in person. Let's all stand for the prayer and then the pledge. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this time that we have to come together to do work for the citizens of Dougherty County. Thank you for the resources that you have provided us with. Thank you for the spirit of collaboration and cooperation you continue to provide us with and that allows us to make better decisions for our citizens. Please allow us to continue to work together in one spirit to make decisions that affect all of this community in a positive and bountiful way. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Consider for action the minutes of the October 4th Regular Meeting and October 11th Work Session.
Motion approved.
Seconded.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? There'd be none. Call them out for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. When I move on to delegations, this is where the commission will hear comments of those items pertaining to Dougherty County for which a public hearing has not been held or scheduled. We ask everyone to be brief, to the point, and consider it a time for others. And our first delegation is Justice Kenneth B. Hodges III, our former District Attorney and Judge of the Court of Appeals, present to provide an update for the Southwest Georgia Self-Help Center located in Dougherty County. I understand that Mr. Kerbo is here with him as well. I think Mr. Hodges is on the line. Is that correct, Justice Hodges?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Mr. Kerbo is the chairman of the Southwest Georgia Self-Help Center. He's better suited to give the presentation to y'all.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Good morning. Mr. Kerbo?
I apologize for disappointing you all. I know you were expecting an appeals court justice in front of you today.
That's all right.
But I'll do my best. All right. The reason I'm here, I am the chairman of the Board of the Southwest Georgia Legal Self-Help Center. And we are a fairly young organization. We were started roughly three years ago, under the direction of the Georgia Bar. I'll tell you a little story about how we got where we are. You're all aware that we have a law library in our courthouse, which is funded through various filing fees and certain funding from the state. But the trouble with that is that most people don't really know what they're doing in a law library, except for lawyers. We have had a law library before, but we really can't afford one right now. And that's a pretty common complaint and a common problem across counties in Georgia because the funding for law libraries hasn't really changed since, I think, 1988. So it's been a long, long time since they've adjusted that. And so law libraries have kind of scraped by and done what they could. In the meantime, on one hand, you've got courts getting backed up with people coming in with poorly drafted complaints and not knowing the right court to go to. And if any of you are lawyers, I know Cohela says, you've seen, and you might have gone for a ticket or anything like that, you've seen the judge have somebody in front of them and have to, it's what we call bench litigation, where the person's got the wrong form, but the judge is saying, I can't help you. I can't represent you, but you're in the wrong court. I can tell you, you need a different form, but I can't help you. And they stand there for 10 minutes and do this little dance. And this is a common problem nationwide. And so the, I want to make sure I get the name right. The National Center for State Courts came up with what's called the Access to Justice Committee. And they picked seven states originally, one of them being New York and one of them being Georgia, to create pilot projects for what's called a self-help center, a legal self-help center. Now, what this is, you've heard of Georgia Legal Services. That is for people below a certain poverty level. They get actual representation to go to court. Now, we do not serve those people. There are certain people who just barely don't qualify, but also can't afford to hire their own lawyer. And that gap in there is largely what we serve and what these projects are designed to do nationwide. And so we started our project about three years ago. And we work on what we like to call legal triage. People come to see us, usually, not always, but usually it's some sort of domestic relations, divorce, or probate issue. These are things that affect everybody, no matter what kind of money they have. Every cross-section of society typically will see these issues. And so those are our most common forms, and that's the most common thing that we focus on. What we'll do when they come to see us is one of what we call our legal navigators. First thing they do is make sure that people understand that we do not represent them. All we can do, we can't show them, we can't put them in our car and take them where they need to go. We can point to the map and we can say, this is where you're trying to get, and this is roughly the route you need to take. And here are the forms that we think you need. And this is the court you need to take these to. If you need help filling them out, we can point to the right section, but we can't represent you. And in fact, we have them sign off on a little form that says they understand we don't represent them. And we're limited in what we can do. And we are limited, but what we've done is from doing that, we've wound up serving roughly 10 to 15, what we call patrons, on a slow day, as many as 50 to 100 on a fast day. And now, these are people who otherwise will be wandering around the courts, trying to figure out where to go, talking to clerks, trying to get forms, being told they can't be helped, and then filing what they could. And it might be that they're in the wrong court, and it might be that there was no need to file anything to begin with. It might be that they pick up their phone and start calling their district representative with a problem. When they came to see us, we'd have told them, you just need to call 311. Or here's the code, and here's why. There's not really much you can do about it. Or here's what you can do. And so what we did is we sent around a survey to our clerks in Dougherty County and our judges in Dougherty County and in a bunch of the surrounding counties that we wind up helping as well. And what we found out is that we have reduced bench litigation by as much as 66% over the last few years. And that's good for two reasons. One, that means a lot of the people who've come to see us either have decided they don't need to file anything at all, or they've gotten it done right, or what happens a lot of times is we've sent them to a lawyer who either will take their case pro bono or what we call low bono. They might say, well, tell them, bring me 150 bucks, and I'll help them for a couple hours and send them off in the right direction. And so we've seen the results through the courts, and we've seen them through the people that we've helped. Now, that's all wonderful, and it's going well. And so we've shifted from being the pilot project in the state of Georgia to what they call the model project. Since we've gotten started, 10 other judicial districts have started similar programs or the same type of program. For example, Fulton County has a program strictly to help people with their magistrate courts because they're so clogged up with small claims up there. And that's helped them out a lot. When New Orleans, forgive me, Louisiana State was granted a pilot project program, the first thing they did was call us here in Dougherty County to figure out how to do it, to take our model and grasp it on what they've done. And so far, that's going well. But again, we're separate from the law library. We're funded mainly by a grant from the Georgia Commission for Continuing Lawyer Competency. I may have spoken on that, but it's the Georgia Bar Division. They've given us 150,000 a year. We will reapply for that this year, and we have applied for every other grant we can get a hold of. In the long term, we'd like to do what New York State has done. They took this pilot project the same time we did it. And they've got what's called a uniform court system. And what they did is they immediately implemented, saw good results, and did it statewide. Their entire program of law libraries are now also self-help centers statewide, and they're funded through their courts. And that's just how they do business now. In the long run, we'd like to get to a point in the state of Georgia where that's what we do. But we're doing it good here. And in the short term, as we've got all these other pilot projects popping up throughout the state and gaining steam and doing good work, eventually we'll go make the ask from the state legislature. But the first thing we're asking for is the support of our county commission to help get it on our local delegation's agenda to go to the state capitol this session. And all we're asking for is no money from this commission. We're asking for your support to go to the state legislature and ask for a bill which asks for roughly the ability to add between a $5 and $10 filing fee to magistrate complaints, to magistrate filings, that would then go into the county coffers and then become a grant to the self-help center, separate from the law library, just the self-help center. And what this will do is give us roughly $30,000 to $50,000 a year in additional funding to help us grow. And if we can do that for Dougherty County, to keep this thing rolling, we do feel good about what we can do statewide. And if it's what it takes, and if it's what it takes to get support, we think it'd be great if we gave every county commission the ability to charge this fee. Now, what we're not asking for is for y'all to say, yes, here's a number, we're gonna go ask for it. The way the bill would work is the state legislature would give you, the commission, the ability then for us to come before you and ask you to vote on what a filing fee should be that would assist this self-help center in continuing this pilot project. And ultimately, it would give you the ability to withdraw that funding once we achieve a statewide solution or some other solution. And I mention other solutions because we try to be as creative as we can. We're separate from the law library. They've got funding and its own issues, which we've worked out separately. They're technically a separate board, but we meet together. The self-help center is an ability to try to essentially fix the way law libraries work statewide. And eventually, I'd love to see those merged, but that's not happening anytime soon because of a variety of reasons which we've got to address. For example, not every county is as dense as Albany, and they want to keep that funding. For example, in Baker County, they don't want to send all their money to regional self-help center until they see some return on that investment. We're hoping to show that to them over the next few years so that we can get more rural counties than Dougherty County involved, just so that we can do what New York State has done and what they've seen great success with. So to reiterate, all we're asking for is your support in getting this item on the agenda of our local delegation that they can take to the state capitol, to ask them to give you the ability to add a filing fee to magistrate claims, which would help fund the self-help center.
Understood. Comments or questions for Mr. Kerbo?
I have a couple questions. All right. Good morning, Mr. Kerbo.
Good morning.
My first one is, will the inmates in the Dougherty County jail have access to the self-help center?
No, people have to physically, right now, people have to physically come to the self-help center. There are projects we're working with with online access. Of course, we've got to get the online access and potentially what we refer to as portals. So the example I gave was Baker County. So instead of having a law library there, what we would have is a computer setup with direct access where people can make appointments with our self-help center and essentially do a Zoom chat with one of our legal navigators that would help them get what they need done. I don't know what, I would love to see the ability for somebody to help inmates with issues, but I've got a feeling that's a different issue on a state level as far as getting funding. But right now, I don't have any opposition or direct support for that ability. But potentially in the future, especially if it's a statewide solution, that's probably, I would imagine, that would be accountable.
Okay. My next one is, you want us to, or the state delegation, to ask for that increase in magistrate court fees, $5 to $10 or so?
Yes.
Who's that fall on? The citizens who come into the courthouse to file paperwork with magistrate court?
That would fall directly on the people who file magistrate claims.
So there's gonna be a little bit more of a burden on them?
It does add a burden. So if you did a dollar, it's a small burden. Of course, 10's much bigger. But the gist of it is that most of the people in that gap between Georgia Legal Services and being able to hire a lawyer, many of these claims do wind up in magistrate courts. So of course, there are plenty of people who are gonna wind up paying this fee, who won't ever use our services. But the bulk of the people paying those fees, and I don't have the exact statistic in front of me, but the idea is that primarily those people using it are the ones paying the fees. And for example, when somebody comes in, the husband and wife saying, we want to get a divorce, we don't know what to do. Well, of course, we separate them and then direct them to the correct forms. But if they're buying a divorce packet, they're paying us money for that. So ultimately, the greater bulk of the cost falls on people actually using our services. But yes, that filing fee would certainly fall on some people who aren't using.
But you feel that the value is greater than the low bono or pro bono services they would have to receive?
Pro bono and low bono are excellent when we can find a lawyer to match up with somebody. And that's, of course, usually the first advice we give people is, first of all, the best thing you can do is go hire a lawyer. Because a lot of people will come see us who can afford one. And we explain to them why they might should do that, and they relent and go. Or we'll find somebody to take that handle for them. But our goals is serve as many people who are actually in that gap, and it usually is only them who purchases our forms and uses them. But of course, let's say somebody's a landlord who has to do 10 evictions a month, they're gonna be paying that.
Right.
And of course, anybody directly challenging an eviction, they would pay that $5. But they're most likely gonna wind up coming to see us as well.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Yes, Christian Jones?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea because of the fact that what this would do for us, this would cut down on street lawyers because a lot of folk get in trouble because they're trying to be lawyers themselves. Working with the law library, you know, once upon a time, people trying to get various things, we send them to the law library. But certainly, if you all could implement that, certainly I think that would help folk, like you said, get them on their way. Because most people, they start talking to each other, and that's when they mess up, you know, and they don't have, they can't afford a lawyer. So certainly, we're obligated to try to help, see if we can get these folks some help because otherwise, they're not gonna get any help at all. They're gonna crash and burn. That's what you said this morning. They're gonna crash and burn. So certainly, I think it's a great opportunity for us to help some folks who need some help.
Sure.
Thank you.
Justice Hodges, did you have any other comments you wanted to add?
No, sir. I think Chairman Kerbo has adequately covered everything. We appreciate y'all's time and look forward to your support on this.
Yeah. Well, let me just make a few comments. It's been my observation, especially with COVID-19, that our court systems are, I've never seen anything like this in terms of being backed up before. And that has a direct impact on our overall efficiency as well as the revenues that are collected at the county level as well. And our judges across the entire state are incredibly behind, not for anything that they've done, but they're conducting hearings and trials around the clock. And anything that can promote that efficiency, I think, is something that is, something that is certainly be considered. And appreciate this. I have a couple of questions for you, Mr. Kerbo. This is, so this was a pilot project that was initiated by the state bar, is that right?
Yes. The, I want to make sure, the National Center for State Courts selected Georgia through the Georgia Bar to be one of seven states to start with. And of course, New York immediately went and ran with it, and they've changed their whole system. But the Georgia Bar formed the Access to Justice Committee and then selected us as the pilot project. And so now, other projects throughout the state have also cropped up. And those, of course, will be the counties we would go to to seek further support for this bill and for others in the future, to hopefully help us get across the goal line to a statewide system of these centers.
Sure. Who's currently staffing this?
Gerald Williams is currently our part-time self-help center director, and he's also the part-time law library director.
Ah, that's so.
And of course, we have wonderful staff helping him as well.
Sure, sure.
Working tirelessly on these grants and helping.
Well, it's a much-needed service, and very thankful for your time and attention in public service on this matter. Oh, go ahead, Christian Grant.
So just to be clear, Mr. Kerbo, the ask here is that the board provide support and collaboration with our local delegation to pass, draft and pass a bill to make this a statewide thing? Or do we want to just do it in Dougherty County first?
I think it's local enabling legislation.
Right.
That would enable the county to make the determination based upon the needs of this entity.
Exactly.
So it's literally just enabling legislation.
Yeah. If we can get other centers across the state to support us, we'd love to give every county in Georgia the ability to do this. But if not, we'd love for it strictly to focus on Dougherty as the pilot and now model project to, is just another way to help us keep moving.
Understood.
Until we can get to that speed.
One other question. From a revenue perspective, you know, I'm thinking if Dougherty County is the epicenter for a successful program here, but it has regional implications, and this self-help center is drawing traffic from surrounding counties, they're obviously filing in those counties, but those fees aren't making it back to Dougherty County to support the program. Does that make sense? So if I'm in Baker County and I'm getting self-help, how would, how would we be able, I'm just thinking about this from a revenue perspective, how can we ensure we're capturing the right revenue and able to feed this back into operations?
Well, most of these forms are model statewide forms. And so even if it doesn't go through, even if they don't file here, if they're, say, buying a divorce packet from us, that fee stays with our center.
Okay.
But that's one of the issues for the statewide solution would be more rural counties, kind of the backwards analysis, saying, we don't want to be paying for all this if the whole center's in Dougherty County. And so that's why we focus on the portals and the internet access to try to make sure they do see a benefit.
There's also a major cost avoidance value, which is the number of people that really don't need to be in the courts and that are clogging up the courts or filing the wrong thing, that realize that they just need to be calling 311, was your example, or doing X, Y, and Z. They get removed out. So then the cases that need to be there are actually getting filed and moving forward and generating revenue and resolutions. So.
Exactly.
Understood. Very good presentation. Thank you very much. All very good questions. And Mr. McCoy, if there's, I think there's consensus based on what I'm seeing for us to, can we get a recommendation on a proposed resolution? Let's put this on a work session so we can discuss it again, to make, to ensure that there is consensus or answer any questions. Let's also invite Mr. Kerbo to that work session in case there are additional questions. And let's proceed forward to see if we can establish consensus on making this request of the local delegation. Okay?
Thank you. Now, we'll invite any of you to come by and take a tour of, a tour of us. We're right up on the second floor of the courthouse, all the way back on the left. And we'll eventually be moving downstairs into a new space we built.
And I want to issue my thanks to Mr. Williams, who's, I think he's behind the camera over there. So he's done a lot of public service for this, for this community and very thankful for that.
We would not be here as an organization without him.
Right. Well, he certainly has a heart for public service. All right. Thank you very much. We're gonna move on. Code Enforcement, Director Marshall Nathaniel Norman and Code Enforcement Officer Shabrika Ray, present to update the commission on concerns in District Two. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning. Only concern I really was aware of is the one on Holly Drive with the apartment complex. I know the management, let me move this here, management of the rental company, they have been taking strides in order to try to remedy the problem of the trash there. They increased the number of pickups over there, and recently, they added additional dumpsters. So they are taking an aggressive approach, trying to remedy that problem that they're having. I know that, I brought Ms. Ray with me. She's the one who actually been talking with the rental company as well as the apartment complex also. So I brought her just in case you have some particular questions that you wanted to ask her.
All right. Any comments or questions?
Ms. Jim?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Christian.
I just want to say to Mr. Norman and Ms. Ray, I think the code enforcement ship is right and ready to go. I think we got the right folks, and I'm excited about where we're going and what you all are doing on the ground here. I really appreciate you all. And matter of fact, I called Mr. Norman this weekend to leave a message for his office, and he picked up the phone. So I just wanted to say, I know he's ready to go to work, and we appreciate you and looking forward to doing some big things. We're cleaning up blight in this area. I'm sure Judy Bowles is gonna be happy as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Christian Edwards.
I appreciate everything, Mr. Norman. And I saw the dumpster. But I guess the reason I wanted you to really come before the board, I wish I would have knew that you was coming this week because I would have did something a little bit different. But it's really a discussion for, I guess, the chairman as well as yourself. What I'm interested in that your department has what citation, what ticket powers, where you've had consistent recidivism of complaints on certain issues like old-grown lots, dilapidated cars in the yard, where I know Ms. Ray have definitely done a lot, Ms. Reka, where you've been to Vic Darrow's house five times. To me, you should be able to say, okay, this ticket now is $10. Because see, with the situation we're talking about now, we saw the dumpster, but that's not necessarily a problem. The problem is with that particular location is when the trash guy come. Cuz see, with the situation we talking about now, we saw the dumpster, but that's not necessarily the problem. The problem is with that particular location is when the trash guy come and empty dumpster because they don't have a, a maintenance man on site. So that's where the complaint's coming from, you know, the, the neighbors, it's like, uh, the trash is still on the ground for that whole week. And then when you come out, you give them a citation or a warning, then it stayed, they got like five days to clean it. So it's just a refit, recidivism problem.
Mm-hmm.
And, and you know, like lady told me, she said, "Mr. Commissioner, I appreciate everything you're doing, but they, nobody has any authority because it's private property." Uh, so I guess the question is, what I'm asking for the commission and really the chairman because of the, the background of the lawyer, is in any way or what legislation we need to do, uh, with code where if you have a severe, not necessarily a severe problem, but the, the same situation continue to occur?
Again and again and again.
Yeah, and, and see, like this particular location, they knew that you can't do anything. You know, it's like, well, they gonna come, give me seven days, I'll clean it up. But when a person know there's nothing we can actually do, the, the effort of, of cleaning it up is very black. So we doing, and sometimes it's the same people, but if, if we give them a fine where you know Victor ran the ticket, you know, it's like $50 fine, I'm gonna clean that property or...
In, in other words, you're asking, is there a way we could enable, we could pass an ordinance that graduates the punishment for, for, for somebody that is a repeat offender?
Right, and it's not necessarily talking about those home, like the demolition of property like we doing on my team, but yeah, not that level.
Repeat, but repeat offenders.
Correct.
Right, yeah.
That's a good idea, um, Mr. Lee? Mr. Lee?
I think we've discussed this before, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'll have to, I'll, I'll have to really understand what we're asking here about the fines.
Is, is, is there a, well, let me ask this, is, is, is Mr. Forgy here too? Oh, no.
I didn't see him in the room. Are, are we talking about $50 fine for some violation that we have?
No, we're talking about something a little bit different. We, we, we're talking about when somebody is a repeat offender on a nuisance-type thing that, that they get written a citation for, is there a, an increase? Is, is, is there some sort of ordinance that we could pass that would increase the fine if they've had so many violations within a certain period of time?
Uh, ye- yes, yes, but I mean, we simply have, uh, right now, if you go to court on one of these, it's the first time the person's been, uh, to court. Court can fine them a maximum of $1,000 or six months in jail. That's what our ordinance says. Now, the court may fine them $200 the first time. If they go back the second time as a repeat offender, I'm sure the court will fine them more, up to $1,000. But you have to go to court first before you can fine anybody.
Okay.
But how many, so? How many citations before you go to court?
I don't know the answer. Uh, Mr. Norman, can, can you speak to that?
Yes, uh, code enforcement, our main purpose is to ensure people come into compliance. When it get to the point where we identify that they're not coming to compliance, we issue a citation at that point. They have the right to either pay for the citation or go to court. So we have to allow due process. I think where you were speaking of more, mostly, of more of an administrative, where we can actually give them a citation, one, two, three, like offenses. But even when we issue a citation, they are still entitled to due process. So citation is still gonna have to go to court and the increased fines, as Mr. Lee said, they have to be imposed by the judge.
Do, do you have a feeling or do you have any data as to what, like what is, what are, and we can't control what the judges do, uh, but do you have a feeling as to, like, what, what are they doing?
Um, I don't have a feel right now.
Uh-huh.
No, sir.
Could we get that information? I think that would be helpful information for us to actually see what's happening. And I think what Commissioner Edwards is driving at, he's trying to figure out, he's getting the same complaints at the same house from the same people again and again and again. And their perception in that neighborhood is, well, this person's not gonna do anything because they don't feel like they, you know, there, there's nobody with any real authority over them and maybe they just gonna wait on their court date. Is that essentially right?
You're getting it right on the head, but the problem is, is the length of time that it takes to get the court. Like, when you give that citation, usually what, seven days, right?
They have seven days to come, to comply.
Now, you giving me the citation for seven days, now Big Devil's gone and emptied dumpster. Now a new case gonna start.
That's correct.
See, that's my problem. So now, next week Vic doing the same thing. Now, you give me the citation again, I go clean it up. Now, it's a new case again, it's like, so by the time I get to the judge, it's 90 days.
And the dumpster's been emptied six times.
It's still, it's the, it's the, whether it's the overgrown lots or whatever, it's still, once Vic go cut the grass, now, two months passed, the grass grown up again, Ms. Brika come out, she get a citation, we cut it, it's another seven days.
Right, but see, I think what's happening is we're confusing violations versus citations.
Okay.
Okay. If we get the call that, just like this incident, incident here, we went out, we looked at it, we made contact, they corrected it, that doesn't merit a citation.
Okay.
The citation comes in when they refuse to correct the problem. So by the time they get to the point where they refuse to correct the problem, we issue the citation and they'll go to court then. But as long as they're correcting the violation, they're, they, they, they resolve the issue and that case is closed.
And that's where I am today, once they, once they resolve it. But it's, it's on, like right now, what me and you just said, we've been probably talking about this particular situation the whole year. Now the guy who bought the dumpster, just like this morning when I passed by the dumpster, the new dumpster's there, trash all still on the ground.
Right.
You, you kinda, it's going to continue to do.
I'd like to make a suggestion on this, if there is an actual case in point that we're talking about, that, you know, Mr. Edwards could refer us to, it would probably be better to talk about that from an individual case and see what actually happened rather than a general discussion about. Now, I think, you know, Norman has, has outlined it correctly, uh, the whole point about code enforcement is to get compliance. And when they get compliance, there's no citation.
Right.
If there's a citation, a repeated citation going on, on a particular piece of property and they do, keep doing something over and over, the, the fine will be from the court progressive when the citation has been made. But I don't know of a particular case where that's been happening. And if we're trying to solve a problem, I think we need to understand what the case is that we're talking about in order to be able to solve the problem. So I would like to see a particular property or a particular case where this has been going on. Now, this typically happens more in animal control. When you have an animal control issue, a person lets a dog out, the dog's not on a leash and they're a violation of, and being that large, that happens one time. They come back, that same dog is that large again. Well, it's progressive fines made on that. And until you reach a point of where they're gonna be put in jail. So the system is working unless someone can show us where there's a breakdown on a particular case. That's what I'm looking for.
Sure.
I guess I wanna add one last question pretty much to the chair. So are we saying, Mr. Chairman, there's no in-between where no matter which, the citation has to go to court? That's really what I'm asking.
I, I think, I think that every citation does have to go to court in order for due process to happen.
Okay.
Uh, and for whatever reason, we, we don't, just the way, in the way Georgia works, we don't have the ability to just issue an administrative citation that requires the payment of a fine without there being the opportunity for a court date. I recognize that in certain states with certain violations, you can do that like a parking meter ticket in Florida, uh, like they don't have to issue you a court date. Um, I don't know why, but we're just different. And I, and I may be butchering that, but I think that's right. Uh, is that right, Mr.?
That is correct. Even a parking ticket here, the person has the right to go before the court. So the due process is still gonna transpire anytime that you issue that citation.
So what, what you're talking about though, Commissioner Edwards?
I think I got clarity for myself. What I'm saying, you know, cut out due process, but say like Ms. Brika have given me a citation.
Mm-hmm.
For, let's just say $10. I do have the right, but see, right now, you guys cannot implement any financial fines.
Uh.
That's where I am, so that means if you gave Vic...
Y'all don't write a dollar num, a dollar amount on the ticket. Y'all just issue the citation.
That is correct.
That's where I am.
Okay, I, I just...
See, now you can go to court, but if I start giving, like, what, the situation we talking about? Say if they have a, a actual dollar amount, $10, $10, $10, when, they gonna go out there and clean that property up. But right now, there's no financial piece, so that's the clarity for myself.
So they're just getting a citation, they don't really know what it's gonna be and then it gets determined a couple of months later in court.
Right, that's...
Kid, um, here's what I would suggest, uh, can y'all take a look at this issue and the specific area where Commissioner Edwards is talking about? And also, I mean, I, I understand what he's saying because it does have more of an impact. If I get a ticket that says, you know, $50 or what, whatever, but you actually feel it in that moment as opposed to going, okay, well, I'm gonna go before the judge. And I also do know what happens sometimes in the situations where the judge says, well, did you clean it up? Then it's dismissed, you know, or you just pay a little bit. I, I don't know what, maybe you pay like a dismissal fee or something, I don't know the answer. Can we get some information on that too?
Sure.
Um, yes, Commissioner Gray.
So, you know, a couple of issues on that, you know, the problem is every citation is an individual case number. So if I get a citation, I mean, number one, you know, you get a traffic ticket, here's a, a $500 fine in lieu of a court appearance. I can choose to say, hey, I got caught speeding, here's my $500, I don't wanna go to court, you know, that's my plea. Uh, this should have the same teeth, so there should be a fee schedule, uh, assigned to, you know, all of these ordinances. It says, hey, fine, uh, an overflowing dumpster on a, you know, multi-unit residential property comes with a hundred dollar fine, uh, a hundred dollars in lieu of a court appearance. You can go to court, but the problem is, and this is, is kinda secondary to that, case number one starts on January 1st when they come out and, and do that. So I'm going to court on that one instance and I can say, hey, two days after code enforcement came, I cleaned it up, here's my evidence. That case is now closed, even though they might've been out there three or four more times for violation number two, three, and four between the initial violation and the initial court date. And so there's no way to, uh, come back and say, hey, Judge, you know, code enforcement's been out there four more times. This is a habitual violator they're playing the system. Which is, my second point is, can we, and we should be able to craft an ordinance that is a habitual violator ordinance. It says if you continue to get citations and game the system, code enforcement, cuz you have post-certified folks, right?
Yeah.
So they, they're post-certified, they have the ability to make the judgment as to whether this is a habitual violator, someone who is consistently gaming the system and getting by with it and you know it's gonna happen again, it's just a matter of time. You can escalate this up in code to say, here's a habitual violator ordinance, uh, citation. And, you know, with it, it comes with mandatory minimums and/or, um, reconciliation to, to prevent the problem from happening again.
Right, what, what we do is, I have the officers, whenever they go to court, is to look back in time.
Uh-huh.
And when they get to court, be able to say, on January 15th, we responded, on February 19th, we responded, on July 15th, we responded.
Right.
Although they, if the issues were resolved, this continued to transpire. So in order to do that, I want them to paint a picture of what they're up against.
I, I, I understand, I understand exactly what you're saying. I think what this commission is trying to say is, they want it to be highlighted for the judge that...
Right.
That, that, and, and it be less discretionary, um, that, that this person, okay, they, you charge them with a violation and you also charge them with a habitual violator violation is, is, it, that comes with
Okay.
some salt and pepper, I mean, just, you know, i- in, in, and it hurts, um...
Cuz if we have the ordinance on the books, it gives the judge the ability to then escalate it to, this is now, uh, you know, a habitual violator situation, not just an isolated incident.
Yeah, Spencer?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think we have that on the book. Again, here's what we have on the books.
But we gonna need to follow...
You take it to court and under our code section, the man, the, the maximum fine that can be imposed on somebody for one of these violations is $1,000 or six months in jail. They go to court the first time, they violated the housing ordinances or whatever it is. There'll be a recommendation from stat as to how much that fine ought to be. Now, it can be anywhere up to $1,000 or six months in jail. Obviously, if they go back on the same thing, the second time, they are a multiple violator, a habitual violator, and then the judge, it will be made known, known to the judge. And then the final increase, this time, may be $1,000. Let's say they go back the third time, which I've never seen. I've never seen one, quite frankly, go back with the same violation twice for housing cases. Now, that could happen. So let's say they go back the third time. This is the third time you've done this same thing on whatever this violation is and letting your yard grow up too high or whatever it might be. The judge can then say, fine, this is your third time, you're going to jail for six months. So we have that.
Are the, are these in magistrate court or city court?
Is where this problem is
Magistrate.
from a housing standpoint, on how many times the same person has violated the same ordinance.
Okay.
I haven't seen one, Your Honor, I mean, uh...
You asked my question.
But the problem is, just like Commissioner, uh, Edwards stated, is that people are reconciling these warnings before the, the penalty clause kicks in. So they're never cited to trigger legal penalty. They're gaming the system. If I got, you know, 30 days to pay my water bill and I wait until the 30th day every time, that guy's driving to my house, oop, I just paid it, you wasted a trip. Um, so, so they're, they're, they're playing the system and it doesn't, it doesn't have the ability to change the behavior of the ones who are doing this because they can't say, I'm tired of coming out here, here is a fine. Instead, they have to issue them a warning.
And I understand that, and here's, here's how that can happen and that can change. What you're, what you're doing now, as Chief Norman has said, is there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a case made. They're notified, given a certain period of time. They haven't been proven guilty yet, obviously, as everybody knows. Now, we're trying to get in compliance. Let's say they comply, no cases made, okay. Let's say they turn right around, six months later, and do the same thing, we send it out. Now, you don't have to, you don't have to not make a case. Just because they corrected, doesn't mean they weren't in violation. You can still take them to court because of the violation that occurred, even at, you know, so we need to get out of compliance then and get into making a case. But we've got in court what is needed to take care of the issue relative to the fine and the progressive discipline.
So if the, if the board basically gave your department full ability to enforce this versus get warnings?
Commissioner, Commissioner Gray then to be Commissioner Gaines.
I'm done. I was just gonna say, have, I, I think you have our blessing to make cases and, and continue to enforce stuff.
Commissioner Gaines?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Second time around, make the case, even if they comply.
Go ahead, Commissioner Gaines.
Um, I'm trying to understand, and I've been trying to listen carefully to the discussion, uh, trying to understand the case in point and I don't quite get the case in point. Uh, I hear, I think, and I could be wrong, um, theoretical discussion, but I'm trying to understand exactly what this particular case is and whether or not it is, uh, uh, a problem throughout the county because I'm, I, I've been in my district now for, I don't even know how long I've been representing it. And I'm trying to understand if I've had a case that would fit this, uh... And I'm trying to understand if I've had a case that would fit this, um, repeated offense, uh, uh, instances that we're talking about now. I thought I heard Commissioner, um, Edwards say that someplace on Holly Drive, that, that this was happening, and I, I don't quite understand exactly how that is happening, and how the law is being applied there in terms of issuing citations.
Well, in this particular case, I didn't really wanna pinpoint a case, because it's, it's actually happening throughout the county. Whether, uh, all of our, as I was just saying, like, you have the dilapidated cars in front of y'all, you have the overgrown lots. So where, where, what we keep falling in the ditch is where, like the chairman said, after our code go out, they have no teeth to say, okay, Victor, uh, here's a ten dollar fine. Now, that's okay if that person wanna go to court to rectify it, but we don't, we're not putting anything right there. So that has no room for that person to clean up whatever the issue is. That's kinda where I am.
You, you, you have a lot of cases.
Mm-hmm.
In the county, where you have repeat offenses, and nothing happens. Is, is that correct? Where you go out repeatedly and you, um, give citations, that person either goes to court or pays, and does not correct the problem. Do you have a lot of that happen?
What happens is, they identify that there's a violation that exists.
Okay.
And then they're given an opportunity to correct the violation.
Right.
Provided they correct the violation, then the citation is not issued.
Okay, well.
Only time the citation is issued is when they do not correct the problem. And I think what, what Commissioner here is saying is that have the ability to impose still a fine, provided right, right then, if they don't, in other words, to, to, to nudge them in a direction of making sure.
But we cannot do that based on Georgia law, can we?
We can issue a citation if they have a right to court.
Right.
Um, let me ask this question. Do you, do you have data that could show us whether, and I understand, I understand what's being asked here. Y'all go out, y'all get a call, it's a dilapidated car, it's grown up grass, or it's whatever, wha- whatever it is. Do you have a sense, like, do y'all have certain people, do y'all have to go see every month or every other month, that literally don't move until you guys come out there and report the complaint?
Until they get a violation. They, they are some, yes, sir, it is.
Okay. So, I wanna take that. And then, what Commissioner Edwards has described, I think, and what my sense is, I'm trying to get an idea for, is whether or not this is something that can be addressed with more aggressive enforcement at an operational level versus a legislative decision, which I think is where Commissioner Gaines is questioning.
Exactly it. That's what I'm trying to get to.
And so, how, like, how prevalent is it in these situations where the person lets the grass grow, or the dilapidated car sit, or, or whatever it is, the garbage overflow, we all having to go right out there again and again and again, and then they clean it up becau- before you write a citation, like? And I think that's what we're trying to get rid of, and what I'm trying to center in on is, is the answer, just going and issuing a citation without giving the, like, if they've been doing it again and again and again, like, using that discretion to say, you know what? We're not coming out here and talking to you this time, you got a court date. You see what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
Um, can you, do, do you have an idea of that, or, or would it be beneficial for y'all to self-examine this issue and come back with a recommendation? Because I, I frankly, that's where I'm at right now. Is, I, I don't want to try and dictate to a department and a, and a, obviously, a very smart professional. We're talking about a, a finite number of people that aren't doing the right thing.
Right.
Um, and y'all interact with them day in, day out. Y'all know who the folks are that do the right thing, y'all know the folks are that don't do the right thing. Could y'all examine this issue and perhaps come back to us at a future meeting with some recommendations? And I'm gonna turn things back, well, but yes, Commissioner Gaines.
I had not finished.
No, no, no.
I had not finished.
Sorry?
I had not finished.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I, what I'm trying to understand is what the code, uh, provides. Obviously, there's a graduated process. There's a graduated process, I assume, in, um, how many times you go out there trying to get them before you issue the citation. I don't know whether that's left to your discretion, or whether the code itself says that if you go out there on the same offense, uh, three, four times, it's citation time, you know? I don't know how the, how the code reads. Can you tell me?
Uh, no, there's not a number.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it's based on the discretion of the officer, like this particular case we're talking about here. Uh, you have the trash trucks come by, they dump the dumpster, and when it falls, something falls to the ground, they don't get out of the truck and pick it up. But at that point, it's time for the management property to relieve the, 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 the trash from, from the ground. And when we go out to the management company in this incident and bring to their attention, they rectify the problem. So, and just for, for instance, this issue here, the, the, the dumpsters were, everything was in place on Friday. Come Monday morning, there's excessive trash out there, and just like the commissioner said, there was an additional dumpster there. So in this case, the management company is, is, is trying to do things in order to rectify the problem. So as long as the management company is trying to rectify the problem, we don't issue a citation, because they're trying to rectify the problem.
Yeah, but ob- obviously, there is a bit of discretion on your part.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and it is up, sort of up to you as the law stands now, when, even though they're trying, they're not fixing it. Uh, it is up to you, it appears, to determine when you actually issue the citation. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Now, I don't know, uh, uh, Commissioner Edwards, if, if that's satisfactory to you or not, but that seems to be the way the ordinance reads now. He can go out there ten times, but it's left to him to determine when to actually issue that citation. And, and get him into the, uh, uh, the court system, into, uh, due process. Because due process then begins to take place. It is no longer discretionary. He's then in the courts, and the courts will then decide, uh, or he can pay whatever. There's no fine, though, right?
Right, we don't impose any fines.
They don't impose a fine, he has to go to court.
But the, what we, what we had this morning is asking, where the chairman is saying, we would like to have an ordinance where he can impose a fine. That person still have an option to go to court, but if he imposes a fine, because he knows that, we know what the solution is, is having a maintenance man on site.
That's right.
To get the trash. Now, thi- this particular situation, we know, uh, is not just the housing fault, because where the dumpster sit, it's, it's an elementary school, and even I talked to the, uh, school crossing guard, and even she said, well, hey, they stop and throw trash in. So it's not necessarily them, we're just saying, have a maintenance man, you know when this dumpster's, you know, on a Monday or Tuesday, have your maintenance man come and get it, and I don't get all the calls. But again, where, where I'm at this morning is, if he was able to impose a fine, and say, hey, the problem is, you do need a, 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 a maintenance man to come out weekly and clean. And if this is not happening, this is your fine. Now, you still have an option to go to court. But right then, they gonna make sure that I have at least once a week, a person go out and clean up that particular area.
Can that happen under Georgia law?
That's what the chairman is asking him to, right? Is that what we was?
Well, well, I, I, can what happen under Georgia law?
Can he impose the fine?
I think he can unilaterally require him to pay a fine at that moment. I think he can issue a citation, and then that will be determined by the judge.
Right.
Um, and potentially, you know, well, I think we could set, I'm, I'm not gonna go down that road, but, um, I, I, I think we could set a fine that was less than a thousand dollars and standardize it, and then it would be like, here's your citation, and then it would be up to the judge to decide, you know, decide it. But right now, they've given, they're giving pretty wide discretion, and actually, um, you know, it's anywhere from zero to one to a thousand dollars and up to six months in jail, which is good. What I'm trying to get a sense of, and I'm, we're gonna have to move along here in a little bit, um, I'd, I'd like for, um, for us to go back and look at, like, how often has this happened? Like, I'd like to get a report from y'all, because we'll, we'll get reports from citizens. And sometimes those reports from citizens are accurate, sometimes they're a little bit not accurate, uh, sometimes. And, and sometimes just based on how they feel, they're tired of looking at garbage, and so they get very frustrated, and that just is what it is. I'd like to get a sense of, like, do y'all have a bunch of folks that fall into this category? And are there operational decisions that you guys can make that are more aggressive? Uh, or is there a legislative approach that you would recommend? And I'd like to get a report back on that. You know, A, what is our supply and demand of people that are not following through and that are gaming the system? Like to get an assessment from y'all on that. B, uh, what is your recommended solution to that problem if it exists at a level that needs to be addressed? C, is that a problem that can be addressed operationally, or one that needs to be addressed legislatively? And, uh, yes, Commissioner Gray, then Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah, just one last comment. You know, given the fact that both the city and the county here uh, are constantly bombarded with issues related to blight, and that's one of the biggest citizens' complaints.
It is.
That's one of the most frustrating things, uh, that I deal with in driving through this community, is overgrown lots, trash everywhere, dumpster issues, there are certain things, there's a whole lot of things that code enforcement deals with. But when this is important to us as a community, uh, I believe it's incumbent on us to get a little more aggressive with this. Instead of putting the burden on code enforcement, just stating that, you know, the board has decided, and, you know, within your professional discretion, you know, starting in twenty twenty-two, there will be a zero tolerance policy on all blight-related issues, no warnings. If you come out and someone's in violation, here's a citation that has a, a fine with it. You can appeal it and go to court, uh, you can pay the fine and not go to court, but zero tolerance. We're not gonna give you chances to remain compliant, cause everybody knows where trash goes. There's, it's not like a building code where things have just gotten a little dilapidated. So when it's, you're dealing with overgrown lots, uh, blighted buildings, and, um, and, uh, you know, trash, especially in a, a residential area, you know, sorry, zero tolerance. We're cleaning up this town, and you're a major, uh, tool to, to leverage to get citizens to do that. But if we tell them in twenty twenty-two, zero tolerance for this, it's giving everybody two more months to figure out how to solve this problem, because it's coming.
Right, very good. Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, and, and I agree with the Commissioner, Commissioner Gray, Commissioner Edwards, I agree with both of them, because I've gotten a, a lot of calls. I get a lot of calls from people not putting the dumpster in, in, and most of these are private carries, but what I wanna know, we always saying, this is what we do, so why are we afraid to change and try something new? I, I mean, we know we need to make a change, because we getting, you know, trash in this town is no, is, is just habitually done all the time, whether it's in the local restrooms, or whether, uh, whether it's on the streets or in the yards. When a, when a state trooper pulls down on you and give you a ticket, he doesn't, he give you a ticket right then for speeding. He doesn't ask you to, he doesn't, you know, it's at his discretion, but in most of the time, you're gonna get that ticket right then. He doesn't tell you, well, we gonna take this and, and, uh, and, and just tell you to go on today, and then come back tomorrow or next time, and then we'll tell you to slow down. We doing this thing backwards, people. I think we need to go ahead, and, and we need to put some teeth in blighted property. I mean, we got them all over the community. I mean, I'm calling you, Ms. Ray, I've called you, oh, I've called you millions, millions of times since I've been there. So we need to try something different, because what we're doing now is not working. Uh, I mean, you got it set up, and, but it's so, it is not working, and we need to try something different to get our community cleaned up, to get our citizens happy about trash, and get our citizens in compliance, so that they can begin to educate and say, well, look, we need to throw this in the trash, because one thing about them, if you hit a man in the pocketbook, he's gonna do better. But if you just tell him, uh, we don't continue to have these problems, so we just need to, we need to put some teeth in this thing and strengthen this blighted property, because, uh, it, it's, it's a bad deal we have here in, in, in Auburn and Darty County. If you think I'm joking, just ride down beside your roadside, uh, uh, we cleaned up our street a couple of weeks ago. Uh, two, two days later, I guess the folk got mad, cause we cleaned it up, because it was just as filthy as it was the, the next week. I mean, so we gotta do something about blighted property, and, and I feel good about where we are. I made those comments this morning, we got the right folk, but we just have to get things done, and we gonna have to hit these folks in the pocketbook and make them pay, and then they'll, they'll be mindful.
Mr., Mr. Chairman?
Uh, Commissioner, yes, sir.
Okay. Let me wrap my head around this a little bit. Let's just take this property that we're talking about right here. How many times have y'all been out there?
Fifteen.
Fifteen times, yes.
It's also going by, as seeing it, and then checking up on it, and then taking pictures to make sure it happens.
Okay. Now, I, I think I just heard the county attorney say that on the first trip out there, you can write a citation. And that's your discretion. It would be my thought that you write a citation. Now, let's move this down the road.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's sort of where I'm, I think we're all getting at, is.
I, I see.
Y'all, y'all, y'all can put the pedal to the metal a little bit.
Yes, sir.
It'd, it'd be nice.
Don't have a problem with that at all.
All right, very good. All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We're gonna, we're gonna move on.
Appreciate you.
Uh, we're gonna move on.
Just, just a clarification, Chair. Uh, do they need to come back, or?
No, we're good. Uh, uh, wh- wh- why don't we, we get a status update in ninety days? Okay, thank you. All right, thank you very much. Any other delegations that did not previously sign up, to which we heard at this time?
It was a good question.
It was a very good question.
Fifteen.
All right, we're gonna move on. Um, consider for approval an amendment of the initial incentive-based mass vaccination event budget from three hundred thirty-eight thousand, four hundred thousand, from the American Rescue Plan to administer a third incentive-based vaccination event on November sixth, twenty twenty-one. Mr. McCoy's gonna address.
Mr. McQuaid, uh, Chairman, uh, we are recommending approval, uh, potentially the first time, and request to, uh, a budget of three hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars for two vaccination events. Very successful, probably, thirty-eight, this is the first time, and eight hundred seventy-five the second time. Uh, we gave a report to you, uh, Commissioner Jones, uh, recommended, uh, a third vaccination, uh, event. Seem to have, uh, consensus, and, uh, last week we were, uh, asked about, uh, approval process. We're here, uh, today to give a board reaction, uh, to this event. Uh, we discussed a, uh, budget increase during our ARP presentation of about five hundred fifty thousand. Uh, so far, we spent about two hundred sixty thousand for the two events, but that may not have captured all of our expenses, because we have to receive all the invoices. But, uh, we have, uh, brought down that, uh, budget amount to, uh, four hundred thousand. And then we, we can get away with it for four hundred thousand, uh, not all.
Okay. Nobody heard anything I said?
We got you. I did. Yeah, we got you. Yeah, we heard you. Yeah, we heard you.
Okay, so, uh, we are, we're recommending, uh, approval of a third event, and I would also like to add that, uh, Commissioner Gaines, uh, asked that we, uh, in, in, uh, expand our offerings. So this go-around, we're gonna offer Pfizer as well as Moderna. So, um, each time we do it, we're, we're trying to do it bigger and better, and, uh, make it, uh, broader, uh, ha- have broader appeal.
All right.
We're recommending approval.
Un- understood, and I, I understand, we, we, you know, we have, obviously, uh, respectful and, and different, differing opinions on this matter. I'm gonna ask, is there, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a substitute motion, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, all right, hold on one second, let me make a few notes. Motion and a second. Commissioner Johnson has a motion.
I, I have a substitute motion that we table this until we get all.
I, I have a substitute motion that we table this until we get all the numbers back to know exactly how much we spent. Um, Mr. McCoy just stated that he does not know what the total bill is gonna be from the first two events. And I would like to know what the total bill has been before we do a third one, especially in lieu of numbers going down and we are kind of going through what seems to be a recovery and turn this pandemic around. So my substitute motion is that we table it until we have those numbers back. We don't know what's gonna happen after the holidays. We don't know if, what's gonna happen after Thanksgiving, the break or whatever, or what happened after Halloween or whatever. But my point is, in lieu of numbers going down, that we table this, understand exactly how much we spent before we increase it by sixty-two thousand dollars.
Okay, is there a second for the substitute motion?
Second.
Okay, there's a second from Commissioner Edwards. Um, discussion on that ma- on that matter and the first matter? We had discussion on both motions, correct? Mr. Lee?
Right.
We have commit, we can have discussion on both motions now, correct?
Well, now, now, of course, you take the second motion first and you have discussion on the second, uh, the substitute motion.
Okay.
And then you vote on the substitute motion.
I got you. All right, so we're gonna have discussion on the substitute motion. Thank you. Mr. McCoy, the, and let me ask a point of clarification. Commissioner Johnson, you said to table it until we have the more accurate numbers as to what the cost was on the first and second event, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. McCoy, what, what are, like, how many, how many costs and expenses do we believe are outstanding from the first and second event that haven't been reconciled yet?
Well, we, we are currently under budget.
We're under budget for those two events?
Under budget from the first two vaccination events.
Okay.
So you've already authorized a budget that exceeds what we've spent so far.
Okay. Are the, are the outstanding expenses that have yet to be reconciled, are, do they possess the ability of taking us over the budget that what, that what we've already set?
It's, it's my thought that it will not.
Okay. But like, how many expenses are outstanding that, that are yet to be reconciled?
I would guess that it, it may put us at three hundred thousand.
Okay, and what was the budget that we originally set for those events?
Three thirty-eight.
Three thirty-eight, okay. And so now we are recommending, the recommendation from staff is to expand from three thirty-eight to four hundred
Yes.
so that we can actually accommodate a third event.
Yes.
And we do not believe that the expenses from the first two events, which have yet to be reconciled, are likely to even carry us over what we originally set for two events of three thirty-eight.
That's correct.
And where, where are we currently at in terms of expenses? Did you say two sixty?
Two sixty.
Okay.
Yes, sir, so to date.
So, so, okay.
Yes, sir.
Like, what expenses are left? Like, what vendors are left that, where we haven't reconciled their expenses?
Yeah, I believe the tents.
So it's not the medicine?
No, it's not the medicine.
It, it's not like?
No, our, our largest expenses, we've, we've captured those.
Okay, unless we spent, you know, unless we ordered forty thousand dollar tents.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I got you.
The largest expense would be those carts. So the dent cans. And so we paid for that already.
All right, I, I understand where Commissioner Johnson's coming from. He wants to make sure we're getting the information.
Yes.
So there's seventy-eight thousand dollars left.
This is just a budget.
Yeah, within the budget that we set. Yes, we're still seventy-eight thousand dollars under budget, but we're still reconciling expenses.
So asking for sixty-two would put that budget now at a hundred and forty thousand for this third event.
So we're providing a cushion against overage of the original amount by doing the third event.
Yeah, because we, we've expanded each time it's grown.
Right. And so this additional money will provide us cushion and we fully expect to be under the total budget of four hundred thousand dollars for all three events.
Right, that, that, that is correct. But our, our number went up because again, the first time we did Pfizer only, we had three lanes. We expanded to six. Now we're expanding again because we're adding an, an additional lane for Moderna. So it's getting bigger and bigger and when that happens, your costs go up.
So what happens to the dollars once everything's reconciled? What happens to these leftover dollars? They go back to the CARES Act budget that can be used for other things?
Yes, well, we'll give you a full accounting of all that we've expended.
You'll go back into the ARP pool.
And if it's under the budget, it will be there to be reallocated according to the board's desires.
Well, I'm just, I'm, I'm gonna state, and I totally recognize and appreciate, everybody has differing opinions. They're completely respectful and respectable on this. But wearing my hat and watching the number of people that passed away and died and that were on respirators and the number of people approximately thirty to sixty days after Thanksgiving of last year, that is, that's where my heart is, that's where my thoughts are. And, and I totally appreciate, understand and get where folks can have differing opinions on this. But that's where my thoughts are. And maybe I'm colored by the fact that I've had to have conversations ordering a mobile more before. But that's, I'm, I'm, and I can appreciate the fiscal responsibility. I'm, I'm gonna be supportive under these circumstances of supporting having the event before, before Thanksgiving. I say that with all due respect to all my colleagues.
Absolutely, but it's still on my substitute motion. So will this remove the five hundred and fifty thousand dollar allocation that's in the ARP budget plan? Will this, will this take this completely off the table? This four hundred thousand dollars will replace the five hundred and fifty thousand that you asked for on ARP?
Yes, sir, so the mass incentive-based vaccination event will remain as a project. And the budget will go from what we shared with you last week of about five hundred and fifty thousand to four hundred thousand, assuming that it's approved today.
So you're gonna remove that number of five hundred and fifty thousand and reduce it to four hundred thousand?
Yes, sir.
And this third one, we'll, we'll have completed that task off of that list? Because we have not approved the list yet.
You haven't approved the list.
So how can this, how can we vote today on something that's going to remove a list we haven't approved yet?
Well, so you, although you haven't approved the list, you approved this project.
This one project?
Weeks ago last month.
Sure.
The event was approved, so therefore you have approved this project. So it must stay on the project list for ARP.
But this four hundred thousand dollar, if it passes today, will remove it from the list because that task will be completed?
No, it'll, it'll be there. It'll just have completed next to it. And when we get the actual budget number, so it's no different than the Senate County's budget in July. You set a budget, you may or may not spend that budget. You may be under, you may be over in some areas, but you don't know.
I understand, but no further dollars will come from ARP to this project?
Unless we choose to have another event in the future.
A fourth or fifth or sixth event.
Right, right.
Commissioner Gaines?
Yes, what we're voting on today is the whole of the third event.
Yes.
We're not voting on the information that came to us last week. We're simply voting on a third event, period, full stop.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Jones?
Character is everything. COVID, COVID nineteen deaths are real in this community. We've already told the folks that we were gonna come back with another event. We need to have an event because of the fact that we're going into the holiday season. And we don't know, you just said it, Commissioner Johnson, we don't know, but we don't want a chance and roll the dice on it either. I think it's better to be safe than sorry. We've told these folks that we're gonna do this third event to get these other folks that are not vaccinated. And I think it's, I think it's been hoping on us as a commission to do this next event. Now, we don't have to have a fifth and a sixth event, but it, but as Mr. Chairman said, we need to get it done.
And in the words of Mr. Chairman, to all good comments, but Commissioner Gaines, this, we are voting on the American Rescue Plan because it's listed on this agenda that four hundred thousand from the American Rescue Plan to administer. So we are voting on a portion of that American Rescue Plan. And Commissioner Jones, I do understand that death is real and COVID nineteen is real. And I'm not against the vaccine. I'm, I'm, I'm actually really excited about all of the new vaccines, all of the new breakthroughs in the vaccine, very much. I appreciate the healthcare administration in our community. But at the same time, it is a free shot. So I shouldn't have to convince people with money to go out and take a free shot when we could be using our ARP money to strengthen our budget going forward because we are handing out raises for, for people that, bringing up, we're doing a pay study. There are all kinds of things that we're doing to strengthen Dougherty County, handing out free money. If that's the case, we should give every, every citizen in this county two hundred dollars and let them spend that money accordingly. Because several people have taken the shot already and wish that they had got paid for taking the shot. They didn't. They were just doing what morally their, their responsibility was to do.
Mr., Mr. Chair, please.
Yes, Commissioner Gaines, thank you.
If I may, Commissioner Johnson, and I won't belabor the point, but it does say that we are to use the American Rescue Plan money to administer a third incentive. It does not say that it is the, the budget in the approved American Rescue Plan. It does not say that.
I understand. And I understand all of our positions and I understand the thoughts. And I understand what Commissioner Johnson's saying is we're actually establishing what the amount of money will be in terms of that component of the budget effectively. And I understand everybody's positions. What I'm gonna do is move forward with the parliamentary procedure that we need. I'm gonna call Commissioner Johnson's motion to table first. And we're gonna proceed by roll call vote so that I can actually keep track of all votes. I'm gonna start with Commissioner Jones. As to Commissioner Johnson's vote, uh, motion, do you vote yea or nay?
Nay.
No one.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Jones is a nay. Commissioner Gaines? Okay, nay. Commissioner Gaines? Commissioner Gray?
Nay.
All right. Commissioner Johnson, are you yea?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Newsom?
No.
Okay, nay. Chairman votes nay. That motion fails to carry five, or excuse me, five to two. We'll now call the original motion, which was made by Commissioner Jones and seconded by Commissioner Gaines. And we're gonna proceed by roll call vote. Commissioner Jones, you vote yea or not? Yea. Okay, Commissioner Gaines?
Yea.
Okay, Commissioner Gray?
Yea.
Okay, Commissioner Johnson?
Nay.
Okay, Commissioner Edwards?
Nay.
Commissioner Newsom?
Yea.
Chairman votes yea. Motion carries five to two. Thank you all for your respectful
Thank you, sir.
debate on that issue and for the information. Thank you. All right. Consider for action the purchase of ten stainless steel toilet sink combination units from the jail for the sole source vendor. I'm sorry, it's just funny to me to talk about that. Engineering and equipment company out of Albany, Georgia, the amount of twenty-six thousand nine hundred fifty dollars funding is budgeted to spot seven jail equipment. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? They're being known, we'll call them out for a vote. Those who favor signify by saying aye. All right. Any opposed? The sinks pass unanimously. Consider for action the resolution provided for the acceptance of the proposal for a comprehensive classification and compensation study for Dougherty County Human Resources Management Advisor Group in Spartanburg, South Carolina, in the amount of thirty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars subject to the execution of the contract by the county administrator. The recommended vendor was selected as the lowest responsible, responsible proposer. Funding is budgeted to the general fund, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion?
Just one thing, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Edwards?
When is the deadline of, that we have, Mr. McCoy, for the response to be back?
Well, we, we are expecting this, the completion of this project to be as soon as possible because we, we are under a time constraint. But the EDA has afforded us some flexibility.
So we're looking at what, probably next year?
Probably, we're, we're hoping in, by December.
Okay.
Yes, sir. At least mid-December at the latest.
All right, very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Call them out for a vote. Those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consider for action the resolution provided for the acceptance of the proposal to provide professional services for an archaeological study to construct a multi-use trail for Dougherty County from Southern Research out of, out of Georgia in the amount of twenty-eight thousand two hundred eighty-four dollars subject to the execution of the contract by the county administrator. The recommended vendor being selected as the lowest responsible, responsible proposer. Funding would be provided by the Special Services District with reimbursement provided by the EDA CARES Act for the development of trails at Radium Springs. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion is second, any discussion? They're being known, we'll call them out for a vote. Those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I, I'll take a second. I second it.
Okay. Consider for action the recommendation to rescind the award made on April 5, 2021 to R and M Construction out of Albany, Georgia, in the amount of thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars to install an equipment shed at the Solid Waste Landfill. The vendor defaulted on the bid. Mr. Addison?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
We're back before you with this issue. We started last year about this time trying to get the shed installed at the landfill. And as a direct result of COVID, with rising costs for steel and scarcity as well as trouble with manpower, we've had another vendor back out. So we'd like to rescind this bid now. They're not gonna be able to complete it. And we will monitor the market and bring this back at a, at a time when our local vendors are able to be competitive and get the project done.
It's second or third time?
Well, this, this was the third vendor on the same project that, that declined to complete.
This equipment shed? Yeah. How big is it?
The shed?
Yes, sir.
It replaces a building that's out there. It's probably twenty by thirty or so. It's, it's a decent size where you can park equipment under to keep it out of weather.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
All right, motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Being known, call them out for a vote. Those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consider for action the resolution to clear the list of vehicles and equipment to surplus and authorizing the disposal or sale of same via online auction. Is there a motion?
No way.
Second, motion is second, any discussion? Being known, call them out for a vote. Those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consider for action the resolution provided for the acceptance of the quick claim deed from the Albany-Doherty Land Bank to Dougherty County, Georgia, to transfer property located in Radium Springs for the purpose of providing recreational opportunities. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? They're being known, call them out for a vote. Those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. McCoy?
Yes, sir, I want to clarify comments that, for my response to Commissioner Edwards' question, I got item C and D mixed up. The timeframe for the compensation and classification study is March, April.
Okay.
The archaeological study we're hoping to have in December, so.
Yeah. I apologize, but. Thank you for that clarification. Anything else, Mr. McCoy?
No, do it, thank you.
Mr. Lee?
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, sir. The broadband, Mr. McCoy, is the broadband initiative our plan, is it just for the unincorporated?
Yes, sir.
So is there a separate one for the incorporated that the city is doing project?
Not to my knowledge.
So we're, so we are looking at expanding the broadband services in underserved communities or just in unincorporated community?
The unincorporated area. And we are targeting the DCA's map where they define underserved and unserved areas in Dougherty County.
So if there's a track in my, a census track in my district, can that be a part of this program?
No, it will not be a part of the program because it's in the city. So we would have to talk to the city of Albany about their plans to expand broadband within the corporate limits.
Can you talk to the city of Albany and find out what their broadband plans are for incorporated Albany, Georgia?
Yes, sir.
And, and then I can add my, parts of my district that are uncovered, which I know seems crazy, but I do have large areas in my, in my area that don't have broadband.
Yes, sir.
And my, my second question is from Mr., is gonna be from Mr. Walls. I'll wait till you read it for me. Okay, so I would like to know two things. I'll wait till you read it for me. Okay, so I would like to know, um, two things. One, what is Georgia law for millage rate limits for a county? I would like to know, two, where Darty County is in that? And three, what forecast and what changes can Mr. Wall make for us to reduce or to turn, to, to, to turn back our, our property tax, our millage rate? What can we do other than raise taxes to, to put money back into Darty County?
Yeah. Well, I, I, uh, I could answer a couple of these.
Okay, I would like it.
Yeah, so to my knowledge, and especially correct me if I'm wrong, there's no millage rate limit, uh, for counties. Uh, you set your millage rate based upon your need to generate money to fund the services that you provide. When you see counties or, or communities with, um, with millage rates, with, with millage rates that may be low, it, it simply means that their, their digest is pretty valuable, and so it doesn't take as much to generate, uh, a lot of money. And then, um, communities that, uh, their, their digest isn't all that great, usually their millage rate is, uh, is higher. So it's kind of hard, uh, well, I don't think using a, a millage rate number is a good way to compare, uh, the financial health, uh, of, of a particular community uh, without really digging into their budget and understanding, uh, the, their, um, you know, their budget, whether they have a deficit budget or not, surplus, what their streams of revenue are, and it's a lot of other factors that go into uh, these types of comparative analysis.
So you're saying that we can take the millage rate up as high as we want to?
There's no limit.
There's no limit to the millage rate?
It's my understanding, yes.
Okay, can you confirm that for me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, and I do want to know, still at our rate, what, what financial forecast can he make or you make that we can start turning back that number? What other ways can we find to, to produce funds to support the government operations beyond property tax increases? That's what I want to know.
Yeah, yes, sir. Counties are pretty much dependent upon property taxes. Of course, cities have a lot, lot more revenue stream options than counties do.
Understood.
And so, uh, one way is to, uh, increase your, the value of your digest. So of course, uh, bring in more industry, um, maybe housing, but, um, in, in, increase the, the value of, uh, the digest is the primary way, uh, that, that counties make that happen.
Okay, so I want to know, can we get to, come up with a plan that we begin to actively attack our digest, make it more dynamic, begin to work on it as a commission? I, I know it's not one person's job, so I'm asking, can we start talking about that?
Yes, sir, absolutely. Uh, we've, that's been discussed at, uh, past, um, retreats, and I, it will certainly be a, an agenda item for, uh, this retreat and something that is, uh, discussed during our budget process that we, um, go through, uh, annually, um, and so, yes, we will definitely, uh, address that.
Okay, and verify that millage rate limit for me, please.
Sir?
Verify that millage rate
Oh, yeah.
limit for me. Thank you. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, could I make a comment behind that?
Yeah, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I, I want to say this because this is one thing we've been talking about a long time, is doing some non-traditional. I appreciate Commissioner Johnson bringing it to the forefront and doing something non-traditional to try to relieve the burden on our taxpayers, but what I, what I'd like to, to ask and maybe to ask Mr. Chairman and this commission is that we not discuss this at a retreat because we're gonna run out of time. I think we're gonna need to set, uh, we're, we're gonna need to set some time to, to do this with the Finance Committee. Uh, maybe we need to just have a, a full retreat on this because, uh, you know, from the time that we start our retreat, which is at, uh, probably eight-thirty by the time we finish breakfast, eight-thirty, nine o'clock, and then we have a full agenda. This item here needs to be separate because it's gonna take a lot of time to, to, to work this out with Mr. Walls and all the folks who are in, all the bean counters, and so, surely I would like to go further than just a retreat with this, something maybe, oh, maybe we need maybe look at a week or two or three days to do this thing because it's not gonna be easy to do.
Well, I'll say this, um, I think that every commissioner always wants to lower taxes, increase services, and increase the value of the, the millage. Um, I, I think what we do, it, I mean, it's presumably all of our actions are designed towards that end as well as increasing the services. Um, I think we could get just an informational update from Mr. Wall sometime in the next month or so, to address those questions and see if we could refine where we want to go, um, and make him available to everybody to ask questions of. Uh, and then if we want to drill down, because he did a presentation on this a couple of years ago.
Sure.
Um, I think it's probably worth a, another presentation and another discussion and see where the consensus of the commission is. If we want to go towards certain projects, if we want to go towards economic development, if we want to go towards land development, whatever, I think we can just, I think we take it step by step and, uh, move forward methodically, but, uh, point well taken, and, uh, uh, I actually think I'm agreeing with both of you, so.
That's right.
All right. Uh, Christian Jones, did you have anything else?
Yeah, I'd like to take my little time to kind of address two issues. Uh, the first thing is I want to ask a question, and, and this question is, uh, our public, why, our, our public work, uh, personnel recognized as first responders? I, I think there's something, I don't know, uh, because they, those folks seem to be, they, they, they're some of the first ones on the job and, and, uh, as far as the county's concerned. I'm just asking a question, and, uh, it doesn't have to be answered today, but I would like to have some clarification on this, is why they're not recognized as first responders.
I don't know the answer to that.
I, I, above my pay grade, but I'd like to know.
All right, very good. Anything else?
And also, I'd like to take, take the opportunity, and I don't know if I'm out of order or not, but if I, but if I am, I apologize, but, uh, I like to recognize our media personnel who rep, who reports unbiased news and, and thank them for their work because we want to start with Commissioner Gaines, uh, with the, uh, uh, who's the editor of the Southwest Georgian, uh, Alan, um, who's with the Albany Herald, and we have Quinlan, uh, with W S, uh, W S W G, Taylor with, uh, W F X L, and Molly with W A L B. These folks really do a real good job of covering us and not bashing us, and I just want to thank them.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Gaines?
Um, I'm gonna take my mask off for this, Mr. Chair. Um, two points I'd like to make. Number one is to, um, thank you and commend you for your work on the front line with, um, the Covid, uh, crisis.
Thank you.
You've done an excellent job with it. You've stayed with it. I know it's been difficult, as you mentioned this morning, to watch our citizens suffer from this horrible disease, and, uh, I just think you've been stellar in, in your performance. The second point I'd like to make is that I am awfully pleased and somewhat emotional this morning, um, about the victory of the Albany-Darty County Historic Preservation Commission in preserving the office of esteemed Attorney C B King. It took a lot. It's been a four-year journey for this community to recognize how important that, um, resource is to this community. I'd also like to thank, uh, Dr. Park over at the, uh, Technical School and the Job Corps for agreeing to step up to, uh, offer to restore that facility. I can tell you that I spent my formative years in that office working for Attorney C B King, and I've never seen a more stellar person other than my father, I suppose.
Sure.
In terms of integrity, in terms of hard work, in terms of clarity of purpose than Attorney C B King. And I think that this, uh, uh, on the part of, and I, I'd like to make note in particular of the work of Angela Gibson, and I also like to thank, uh, Judge Weaver for sticking with this and the Albany City Commission for recognizing the importance of preserving, uh, this resource. Uh, and like I said, I do feel pretty emotional about it because I was with him during some of, uh, my formative years. I worked for, uh, John Lewis as well, and I've been around some, some, some pretty important folks who, in my formative years, and, and I have to say that, um, I hope at some point I can live up to some snidgen of what those guys contributed, so, uh, thanks to the Albany-Darty County Historic Preservation Commission.
Thank you very much. Very, very good. Thank you. Um, Commissioner Newsom?
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Commissioner Edwards?
Uh, nothing, Mr. Chairman. Just recognize, uh, Commissioner Howell for sticking his head in and spending time with the, with the good people.
Very good. Commissioner Gray?
Uh, two things. Uh, one, I, I just want to publicly put the citizens of Darty County on notice that anything around blight and trash is, is getting old. Please do your part. Put your trash in the trash can, uh, don't overflow the dumpster. You know, let's, let's work to clean up our community because discussions like this today are not fun to have, and I think I would love to empower our code enforcement, uh, and any other enforcement body to go ahead and tackle this thing head-on, and I don't think anybody wants to face a fine for other people's, uh, lack of taste and decor and throwing trash everywhere, so please just do your part. Uh, the second thing, um, this will be my last, um, support of, uh, an incentive-based vaccine program. Uh, I was for it out of principle to begin with, uh, to, to get shots in arms. Um, there's been two very successful events already. Uh, if you haven't gotten your shot and you're contemplating it, uh, please come get it. It's free at a lot of places. You'll get paid to do it. At this last event, you'll get a hundred dollar gift card. Um, I'm not going to be in support of any, uh, future spend on the county putting shots in arms when from this point forward, it's, you know, it's free through, uh, so many different channels in this community. Uh, if you want to get any type of incentive for doing it, this is the last weekend to do so, according to my vote.
Understood. Um, and I largely agree with a lot of what Commissioner Johnson said today. Uh, in fact, I agree with every single word you said, um, and to be honest with you, I was thinking a lot about that today, uh, about where I was gonna be, and ultimately my vote on that issue has more to do about lives, uh, than anything else, and I agree with Commissioner Gray. Uh, and I do think it's, it's fascinating to me that amazingly some people's morality and their healthcare decisions are so, you know, they're, they're so principled when they're, they're posting something on Facebook, or they're posting a selfie, or they're saying they're, they're waxing sanctimonious and, oh, I, you know, this or that, then, then suddenly a hundred dollar gift card shows up and amazingly all the principles go out the window.
Correct.
Uh, and I do, I think that that is, uh, remarkable, and that's not to say that there weren't plenty of good people that, you know, that helped and, and that, uh, we, we got some folks and that have purely good reasons for accepting that, but there are plenty of folks that I'm fascinated that, you know, abandoned their so-called principled positions in order to get a hundred dollar check and a shot in the arm, uh, and ultimately and I, I really do, like, I really agree with both sides on this, but my position on that has everything to do with saving lives and saving money, and Commissioner Gaines made a great comment a couple of weeks ago. We're spending a hundred dollars, but that person would spend, would cost thirty thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars or a million dollars in healthcare costs when they end up on ventilator, um, and that hundred dollars is a wise investment, but, uh, I don't, I'm never going to forecast exactly where I may go at any particular time or place. Uh, I'm not going to say that I would never vote for another one of these again, but I, darn sure uh, would be very, very, very reticent. Uh, there would have to be some very, very compelling circumstances, and I don't think that people should be rewarded for, um, not doing what, what is right, but I am also thankful, because I have to hold a phone conference or Zoom conference every single Wednesday at ten o'clock where I talk to about twenty-five different folks. I talk to folks from the hospital and I go over the numbers. Been doing this for well over a year. Um, I guess it's become sort of second nature to talk about how many dead folks we got in the community, how many people are on ventilators, how many people we got vaccinated. And I realize that does, that seems probably bizarre to a lot of other folks, but I, I've been living with it every single week. Um, you know, I am thankful to see the pronounced impact that those vaccination events have had on the number of funerals we've had in the community, the number of people that are ending up in a coffin versus not, and, uh, the number of people that are not on respirators, and so to that, I'm, I'm thankful, um, for the decisions that this commission has made and that's, that, you know, and, and the resources we've been given. Uh, and, uh,
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say thank you all, everyone of you all, for allowing this platform to be here to discuss this.
Sit, sit in here.
I want to thank my colleagues in this commission for allowing this, this platform to be here to discuss.
That's right.
Thank you.
That's right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, yes, Commissioner Gaines?
I, I, I hate to come behind you on that.
No, 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 that's okay.
Um, I, I have to say that, uh, Commissioner Jones and I have been there, and we see people walking up, and we know that these people would not otherwise have gotten that shot. And, um, we know that that, that could have been a life lost.
Sure.
You know?
Sure.
And it could have been a cost, a terrible cost. In addition to their lives, it could have been a terrible cost to this community, so. To me, that hundred dollars is just not going to stand in my way of, um, of, of not trying to help the least of others. And it is those, it is those, I mean, those of us who understood would have made the decision to get it done. But those people simply don't understand, and sometimes, but they do understand a hundred dollars.
I, I, I get it. I get it, and it's, it's not a criticism, it's just, it's just reality and, uh, but I'm, I'm thankful for the collegial debate we've had on the issue, and it's been, uh, held very professionally, and I want to thank everybody, and, uh, I'm gonna declare this meeting adjourned.